And, you know, we go with them, there's access. We have to sign, I already talked to the bank, they said that was fine. We have to sign, they sign, and I'll bring an explanation why they want the keys. I mean, to me, it's a simple solution, it's done, the master key stay in the bank, nobody touches them. Not one solo person can go get them, not one of us can go touch it unless there's another one. It has to be either two of us, or one of us, and one of the department heads. And it has to be a department head, can't be, you know, just one of the employees, there has to be the department head that wants it. It's a consistency, I think, and everybody gets their own key.
It's just a office situation, let's first find who the office is.
But you know what I mean, I just, because I got thrown so many things in the last few days and everything, about emergency, medical emergencies, all kind of, it's a medical emergency, the sheriff's not gonna go up there and say, "Can I have the key to get in?" You're gonna break the door down, you're gonna break the window, you're gonna get in. If it's a fire, Charlie Moll is not gonna call one of those, they go, "Hey man, can I have the key?" Because the place is burning down, they're gonna, I know my son, you know, he's in there too, and I know what they do, and, I mean, they break into places. That's bottom line, so you don't need a key for that. And by having a key, or, I don't want a key, the sheriff don't want a key, by having a, by having a key, if something's missing, fingers are gonna be pointed everywhere, we're gonna have attorneys, they're gonna call the county more. This is gonna be a lot of BS, this way it simplifies everything. If we do need the master key, I don't agree with throwing them away or destroying them, I think we should keep them. At eight, ten dollars a year, I don't think that's nothing for the, for the, you know, and I don't think that's much, keep them in the bank in case we do need them, you never know, we might need them, just one of the days we might need them, I'd rather keep them in the bank. And it takes one of us and one of the department heads to get them out, or two of us, say the judge, or Tracy, or whoever may be, we're not gonna be here forever, wanted, you tell one of the other ones, it takes two.
Well, what's the purpose of a master key?
To get into all the, okay, to get into every person.
But that's the case, somebody loses a key, is that...
Yeah, well, you see, somebody might lose their key or something like that, well, you can always get a locksmith and redo the key, you can do that.
Is that, are we right on that beat?
No, because you can't copycat a master key and give it to another master key, and if you give that to someone they lost it, they're gonna have access to everybody else's. You bring in a locksmith, they put in, they put in a tip in there and measure the key, they do another key. Can't get a copy of the master key because you're giving access to everyone.
It's a patented key, there's no blanks on it, you can't just go and get one made, or a locksmith can make a master key.
Can't get them made down here, your, your supply route.
No, no, there's no one.
I mean, they don't want to destroy the keys, but I don't think, why destroy a master key? We may, I don't know why we would need them, but we never know, we may need them later on, possibility. Never know something's gonna come up, oh, we threw them away, that commission is court in 2011, threw them away. I don't know what we could need them for, but apparently they make them for a reason. You know, maybe we're gonna, one of these days, they're gonna do a remodel in twenty, thirty years. And, you know, we gotta move out of there for them to remodel or something, and the construction guys twenty years, thirty years from now are gonna need one of those keys, rather than having everybody's key that they can copy, they have a master key that you can't tell me. Or there's a fire and it burns down, you know, partially burns down, we have to move out of them, they have a key, that, you know, contractor has a key, and we may need it, I don't want to destroy them.
I just sue you strong, not work.
I didn't say, I don't want to keep keys.
The statute says, when the county sheriff, I have charge and control of the county courthouse, subject to regulations of the Commission's Court. So you can adopt whatever regulations you want, you don't need the sheriff having control of the courthouse, but there's no, that talks about the courthouse, there's no specific provision about auxiliary courthouses or any other.
I'm sorry, I don't mind the sheriff having one, that's fine with me, I mean, but have all the other offices, I'm not sure, had the sheriff already stated here, he doesn't want one, he doesn't want that responsibility, I'm having a master key, because, I mean, I would, I mean, trust the sheriff, right? I mean, it's not a problem on my part, but he doesn't want one either, so what do we do? And I'm putting you on the spot, Sheriff, I'm just saying, you know, what we talked about, the lawsuit, you said you didn't want one, so, you know, that's, you know, he's not gonna take one, so we're here with two master keys, and you're saying you want to destroy it.
Yeah, we're not gonna use it, no more than, we're worried about master keys, we've got keys to outside doors, we've got keys to doors. We don't want a master key around, we're worried about it.
I sure don't want one.
The whole problem is if something does happen, they're not gonna ask if you wanted a key or whatever, they're still gonna blame you on us.
It's not about blaming, it's not about anybody being blamed, it's about the security of our own offices. For instance, if the sheriff has a key, a master key, that gets into my office, and there is a potential contested race for sheriff, and he can get in and see the early voting ballots?
He wouldn't do that, yeah, why would you say that?
I'm not, I'm not saying he would, I'm saying, I'm saying.
I mean, there's also, there's also...
No, Barbara, that's not it at all, it's the security of my office that I'm in charge of. It's the security of Robbie's office, it's the security of Jake's office.
How do you know that the janitors in?
We will let the janitors in. That's been said all along.
Another thing, some, I'm sorry, another thing, somebody came up on, they told me just this morning, what about deliveries? I go, well, we make sure that everybody gets the deliveries during the day, no night deliveries.
We've never had night deliveries.
I'm just saying, just for an example, just, they asked me, they asked me that, and I told them, I'll announce it in court. They're, you know, like I said, people can't hit him left or right, more than, more than the, more than almost anything.
We talked about the loading docks there, who has keys to the loading dock and to the doors that goes into the break room? Who has access to them keys? That's kind of, I was over there doing a walkthrough the other day, and I'm kind of, looking, I, I can understand the people, elected officials and stuff, don't want, don't want nobody in their world, which, I don't want to be in your world, I mean, not y'all's little world, I don't want to have nothing to do with.
You know what's in yours.
That's kind of simple, but this is where we at. Who has the key to the loading dock, who has the keys to the break room? I mean, is that, everybody gonna have an extra key to get in the loading dock in case you got the deliveries coming, I mean?
Deliveries don't come at night.
Well, I know, but during the day.
What deliveries?
Well, we got a loading dock back, there'll be papers and stuff, like, and the doors probably, the door will be locked.
They'll bring them to the different offices.
Huh?
Say, they delivered...
That's kind of where, we have a loading dock back here for a reason, why I don't know.
The break room would probably be, you'd have access for everyone all day long, right?
But there's a door to the, the, I'm sorry.
To the outside?
There'll be a door to the outside.
Right, but that would be locked after all, that would be shut down, right? But that would stay open, it's a, it's a public place, where that should stay open, right?
Well, there's a lock on it.
They should be locked, I think.
It should be locked, because it's... So who has access to that key to lock it and unlock it to get in and out?
Well, I think a simple solution is to call the locksmith out for each one and say, for instance, for my office, I want one key that fits the front door, my office and the break room.
That's it.
And then, you know, another department says they want one key that fits the front door, their office and the break room. And if we have a locksmith come out, we can each individually as departments tell them what our needs are, and we, we have one key.
Good, good solution there, okay, I mean, that, hell, that, that worked for me.
That works for me.
Yeah, but I want the key there is to access...
Some of us don't need keys for all the doors.
Well, like I said, I know everybody got their own little, own little office and stuff, and they got keys to get in, kind of like right now, going into courthouse, I've got security of that, and I don't have a key to their offices anyhow. But they got, we got a key to getting the front door, back door, we're all the time, who's locking what? And we still doing that, we're gonna be still doing that over there too, who's locking what? Who's the last one in, last one out, but they also have doors going to the outside, which is at the front door and the back door, and that's gonna be doors going to the outside. That's gonna be up like, here we go again, individuals, and like I said, if they go out the back door and they leave the front door open or the back door, who's gonna be responsible for locking it down at the end of the day? Because there's one, like I said, the county clerk's gonna be on, all the way on this end where I'm at, and all the way on the other end.
I think a solution for that sheriff is that at five o'clock, whoever walks out that door locks it, even if someone is still in the building working. And that way, so we do that in the courthouse.
But if it's five o'clock and we leave, we lock the door, if someone's still working.
Well, that's what we do right now, at four o'clock.
That's kind of what we did, I go back and I bump the doors, but like I said, I bump the doors when I'm on the way out, I'm there after five thirty, six o'clock, seven o'clock, and that, I always go check the front and back, because this is what I've done for seven years.
How did, I mean, the courthouse gets locked, and it's gonna get locked, so I'm sure that they can work together to where they can find a solution where it's gonna get locked, and get to the point where they keep leaving the doors open ten, twenty times a year, and then bring it up to Commissioner's Court, then we got a problem.
I think really, in that building, I might be the most frequent, our office might be the most frequent one staying open after five, and that's only because we have night meetings and torch meetings and classes and things like that. But we're always mindful to make sure that we lock doors, that, you know, everything's secure. As far as that goes, we have that external access, um, well, close to the loading dock. And so we could use that door to let people in at night instead of opening up the big doors, you know?
And the loading docks and all that, they don't go into anybody's personal rooms, it just goes into the hallway.
No, no.
The break room's not gonna, it's not connected to anybody's office, it just goes into the hallway, and there's gonna be people that already have access to the building to get to their offices, so I don't see a problem with that.
Right.
The problem is, it's, if each, if your office is a problem, someone to have you to key there. Because you got a key to the break room, you're still going into the hallway, if somebody got the key to their office, they're gonna have, to get to their office, they're gonna have to get it through the main door, so if they have a key to the break room, I mean, same thing.
I know, we don't have a plan, when they're getting held in public, I still think if sheriffs have a key, what if you have a contested option? Are you gonna do something to that?
Yes, I will hire someone at the outside, but I still be the elections administrator, and I won't have to...
And I mean, if the statute says that, there's nothing wrong with the sheriff having a key, until somebody can prove to us that the sheriff has done something corrupt, or he's a bad person, then we have Commissioner's Court, and we take it back away, but nobody can come to us with that evidence to tell us that he's done something right now. And I mean, he has eyes security for the county.
If he says he doesn't want a key?
Are you saying you don't want a key? I mean, somebody should have a key for security reasons, and if you're saying you don't want one...
It's like you're talking about locking a master key up in a, in the bank, okay? That's gonna be just like me not having a key, you know, because we gotta go find the bank president, open up the bank, get in there in case we run into a situation, and then we can whack up this thing to death here. You know, we really can, you can whack it, yeah, I'm gonna walk, break into everyone of y'all's offices and pack everything off with. That's the furthest thing from my mind, but here, let me go ahead and speak my piece. You know, I mean, I have never done nothing to nobody here other than trying to protect everybody in this county. And like I said, you don't want me to have a key to y'all's offices, so be it. But like I said, I don't want this negative spin like I'm going to do something to your office. There's nothing in y'all's offices that I would even want to look at or do with, number one.
But on the same token, David, you don't want us in your office, is this where we're coming from?
I have investigated stuff, there's paperwork laying on there.
And we have things in our office.
I would never go in y'all's office, I don't go into them, even if I...
I think this is kind of, you want a portion of, whatever's working now, just leave it as it is, if it's working now, what are we trying to fix? Why can't we use the same, whatever the same system is now, I'm not in the courthouse at this time.
There's a lot of keys out to the courthouse, because people have been at the third floor, and mine is with Bustman's office, it's both completely...
When I worked in the courthouse, I had an office to the front door, and I had, I'm sorry, I had a key to the door, and I had a key to my door, and everyone in my office, and it worked, I don't understand why this is such a big issue. No one's accusing the sheriff of anything, we're trying to prevent things from coming in the future, that's all that is. So if the system's not broken, I don't know why we have to fix it. And I think Robbie told me you should put the question out on the serve, and just to ask, this is what is most people do, the sheriff is considered security, and most people do give the sheriff the key, that was the answers that I got.
And the answers I got, out of fourteen, were that one sheriff had a key, and nobody else had a key.
Right. Out of fourteen? Are we gonna get the same fourteen people?
Possibly.
Because, and what, what this says is, we also, we have the authority to do whatever we want, we either want to give the sheriff a key or we don't. But if you don't have some type of emergency plan for that new building, and something happens, it's all gonna go that way. And in the courthouse, those little doors, you can probably hit them, and they would pop open, all those doors. And there's been days that I've gone to the courthouse on more than one occasion, after hours, and both doors have been left open.
Which doors?
Which door?
Both doors in there have been left open, I have caught them both unopened, once sometimes the front, twice in the front, and once on the back. And I've gone over there and locked it. And I came in and told Mr. Bustman about it both times, I called you about it twice. But I've gone over there after five, and the courthouse doors have not been locked, twice on the front door, once on the back door. Called the sheriff, and I told him once that I went to the courthouse and locked the doors, this was since I moved out. Called Mr. Bustman once and asked him to go in there with me, because there was a car parked in the parking lot, I didn't know if somebody was in there or not. Yes?
I was kind of curious on the doors, you were talking about, you know, your son kicking in doors and stuff, and that's a positive situation. How does these doors open, do they go to the inside, do they go to the outside?
It goes to the outside, but, but, that's why I mentioned windows, you can break a window, reach over and pop the door, and then you... Yeah, well, a farmer, they go, they go, like a tool, or this type of door or something. Rather, the doors are gonna open this way, you can't kick a door in, not from the inside, from the outside in, you can kick a door in. But the way from the hallway, no, because they open the opposite way, but there's, each door has a window on both sides of it, so, you know, you would break the one by the door handle and reach in, unlock it, boom, open the door.
If there were an emergency in my office, there's four clerks that live less than five minutes away, that can either long before anyone else can.
I'd say with the rest of the... The sheriff should have a key. It's a plan, he has a plan for something, I mean, it's security, I don't see why the sheriff doesn't have a plan.
And he should have a key in the front and the back door, I don't think he should have a key in the individual office.
He can put the other one in the lock box, but I don't think that he would go into anybody's office unless it was something just major, major, that he has to go in there for, and he would tell us, I mean, I don't, I don't see that happen.
I, I trust the sheriff, that's my... I trust him, I trust him two hundred percent, three hundred percent.
I trust him with my office, I trust him with the courthouse, I trust him with everything.
But the reason I came up with a solution, because he stated the last time that he did not want a key, that's why I had this solution.
Because you almost, you almost were leaving the pretty, pretty...
No, but, how long, how many years have you been here, Sheriff?
Seven.
Seven years, and you've been running, you've been security, you've been keeping this county safe, you've been keeping us safe, and you haven't had a key to the people in the courthouse, right, to their offices?
No, sir.
Okay?
Joe has keys, it's probably because somebody's got them in, there's differences in the doors.
But it's time to make a change now, while you're...
Yeah, I trust him, I trust him with my life, of course.
Sheriff, you have a key to the building.
I trust him with your life.
You have a key to the office, you have a key to the building, but not to the individual office.
I got a key to the front door and back door, that's it, and the key to my office, that's it, Sheriff.
So if he has an emergency to my office, does that mean he's gonna have one now to buy his office, and Joe's office, and Lon's office?
I understand that, because if that's something, if we give the sheriff, the sheriff, the key to everyone's office, that's gonna be something that y'all bring up, of course, and then we're gonna have to give him a key to everybody's office, as office, as long as, that would only be fair, buy his office, he's gonna have to have a key to everybody's office, because he has a key to...
He ain't got a key to my office.
I'm just saying, question, I, it's, it's equality the way I say it, and if he's gonna get a key, and I trust the sheriff, it's nothing to do with that.
It's not about trust.
It's not, on my part, but I understand, you just brought that up, if he gets a key to y'all's office, y'all, y'all are gonna be up here, every Commissioner's Court, and we're gonna end up having to give him a key to everybody's office, because what's fair is fair.
This is what, if the, if he's controlling the courthouse, the county sheriff shall have charge and control of the county courthouse, subject to regulations of the Commissioner's Court.
Okay, we get that, we're not worried about the master keys. We can send them back to the door company, because they can make another one, we can give them to them, we don't have to keep them in a bank box, we don't have to go into that trouble, we can get another one from the door company if they have to make one, it'll cost us seven hundred fifty dollars, or whatever, it's not a poor deep price, he said seven fifty. See, Sam, Victor, we came out of the bank for about seventy-five years, but... I'm saying, if we get one, we're gonna get in there, we're gonna see some of the certain women, get in, we got keys to the inside door. I don't think that's worth spending our time talking about these master keys anymore, we can get rid of them anyway. What we gotta talk about is the offices, if we're gonna have people clean this office, they're gonna clean at night, y'all gonna come down, open doors for the people to clean at night?
Stay awake.
All right, okay. There's a box in that office for spare keys, we're gonna put spare keys in there, it's set up, in the ag extension office right now. William was over, and I said, would you mind having the sheriff's spare key boxed in your office? She said, no, I'll do it, it'll be all right, I can be in here. If someone misplaced a key or don't have one, you go there and get it, what are we gonna do with that? Is she gonna have to keep the key there in her office for it, or are we gonna leave that key on?
I like James's idea.
Like what?
I like James's idea.
But there's no use having that, I mean, if we're gonna be breaking doors and stuff, there's no use paying ten to fifteen dollars a month.
A year.
A year, or whatever it is.
Are you talking about the key to the lockbox?
Yes.
Because, and that's gonna pose a problem too, everybody's saying, why, you know, who's gonna go there, whatever, just settle that, we'll have to prove it, let him destroy it.
Can I ask the question, Barbara, when you came into office and all, did you change your locks on your door?
Mm-hmm, and Joe had keys to all of them, and he has keys to them now, because somebody's been in there, Robbie.
Okay, well, then, maybe you need to talk to Joe and find out what's going on.
Nobody has a key to those offices, apparently.
But if you want to know, somebody has a key to my office, yes, man. Niva has a key to this office, Martha has a key to this office, I don't wanna get locked up there with somebody. I don't say Niva's gonna take anything from me, I'm all right.
My office is set up as a very open office, we have birth records and death records that, that could potentially be stolen. Then you've got stolen identity, we have, we are a, we are a local registrar for birth records. That means that every piece, every time we do a birth certificate, it's on a numbered paper, we have to account for that numbered paper. I don't have a vault, like other offices do now, to lock things up, I don't have a secure vault for any of the records that are private. They have to stay behind the counter, which is open to anybody.
Does a birth certificate, does it have a social security number? Do you have any documents in there we're supposed to do?
Yes, sure, we all do.
We've got adoptions, juveniles, which are all sealed.
Well, personally, I, I think this is ridiculous, to, to have a meeting today at one thirty, we're gonna have another one Monday, what time?
Nine.
For the burn ban, we got a county attorney here, that's also our videographer. We have Ross Fisher here, I mean, this is gonna cost the county two thousand dollars to decide something about some keys to one of our county buildings, not all of them, just one of them, and at the end of the day, unless Ross can tell me otherwise, these elected officials, they're in charge of their offices, so no matter what you say, or what the court says, we'll call the locksmith as soon as they move in, change the locks, and give the keys to whoever they want.
Hold it up. Hold it up.
Hey, Commissioner's Court.
We're off the record. Recess, timeout, whatever.
Where do you put your...
Now you can't believe what you're talking about.
What, what happened, guys?
Okay, you're back on the record.
Well, why didn't we do all buildings, why, why isn't just the New Annex Building? I mean, we got the courthouse, you got the tax office, you got the other, these other buildings, we're just talking about one of them.
So you have the JP's offices, and you can get in any fall city?
Let's see if we can jump this hurdle first, and then...
JP offices aren't different, Ross did explain that to me, you can explain that to Ross.
Yeah, there are certain relationships where you can't deny that they be an office, and of course, if you choose to, probably cornering it needs to be in their precinct, but there is a specific provision, the two ninety-two double oh four, that talks about control of facilities within the municipality designated as a county seat, that would be the other county facilities other than the courthouse and Carham City. And what it says is, this section does not permit the authority of the Commissioner's Court under any other law relating to providing the county facilities. So this particularly says, do you have other county buildings in the county seat that are in it to be controlled by the Commissioner's Court? So y'all can, y'all can do whatever you want, there's no provision that says every elected official is allowed to get their own lock. What the law says is, and there's one provision for the courthouse, and one provision for other county buildings that are in the city of the county seat, and there, you know, provision for other county buildings throughout the county.
If we choose to, but there's no section that says, we have to say, look, the sheriff gets two, two master keys.
It just says, it's subject to your regulations, Commissioner's Court regulations, so y'all, not clear on what you want.
Just for the annex.
For the courthouse, for the annex building, for any of the facilities, for county facilities.
So would even include the old doctor's office down here.
So, so any, any building that, any building that under, under the brother, Clark, Don, and I've been there, whatever, then, they can't change locks. If we, if we give the sheriff access, not that we are, but if we give the sheriff access or a key to it, that's bottom line, it ends here, like I was trying to say.
Yes, the Commissioner's Court should adopt the policy.
Even though they're the only elected official, like we're supposed to know, they have the right to do what they want to do, but because it's a county building...
Right, you have certain, this Commissioner's Court has certain limited controls over the elected official, one, obviously, the budgetary, and then the other, it has to do with the facilities, is that what you're saying?
But does that statute indicate, Ross, that they have to have access to everything in the building, or just the building?
It just says it's not limited to, it just says the facilities, county facilities.
I think it's a big process.
That could be from, from bathrooms to the main office.
The department just give the sheriff one name.
Give it to everybody around. Sheriff, let me ask you a hard question, if you had two master keys, what would you do with them, where would you keep them?
I keep them locked up in a safe in my office in case I need them, if anyone give a tap.
And who has a combination to that safe?
Me.
And that's it?
That's it.
So if there's an emergency, you would have to go in your office, open the safe up, get the key out, which is, but I have clerks that are less than five minutes away, that can do that quicker.
Right.
And if you're on vacation out of the country?
It gives access to my chief deputy, which is a block, it's not a combination, it's a block I have on the key to myself. That's it.
This has been going on for two hundred years here, I mean, we don't have, there's nothing special about this building over here, is it? No, nothing is gonna be stored over there, that hasn't been stored in the courthouse for the last two hundred years.
He just said he hadn't had access to him, the one being in.
He just said he hadn't had access to those offices, so why change it down?
That, that's why I said, King, I had...
And everybody pretty much locked up is locked up, everybody, do y'all, all y'all have safes? Do y'all all have safes? If you don't, why not? You know, I mean, like for monies, y'all talk about large sums of monies, you know, should have a safe somewhere in y'all's facility, y'all take it in every day, a gift to buy, then you should have a safe somewhere, but you know, when you leave at the end of the day, that you come back the next day, that safe is gonna be there, it's big enough to pack it all.
And his documents too.
And documents.
Which you can't put in there.
But you say, I mean, I worry about, here we go again, I worry about the monies. That's what I'm all about with this, and this building is away from the courthouse, and before I had a jail, which I have people... On top of it, the courthouse, and now I have a building that is further away, and I'm having a hard time just trying to figure out how to keep that one, with eleven doors going to the outside, and everybody got a different key.
You know, I just, I gotta say something. Look around, look around, we're all elected by the people of this county. You people have succeeded in making mountains out of molehills. This is ridiculous. I have worked for county judges, I think six or seven of them, five county sheriffs. Never has this degree of minutia had to be decided by a body that had to call in outside counsel to advise them on that. We've come to the point, apparently, where nobody trusts anybody in this county, shame on you.
I don't think we started that, but thank you.
Shame on you, shame on you all.
I trust everybody, that's why I...
And it's, it's time, it really is time to think about, you know, healing and making things good around here. The, the policy has always been that the sheriff and the county judge have been able to get into all the county buildings and the county seat, and whether we voted for that judge or not, we trusted him, and whether we voted for that sheriff or not, we trusted him to honor his oath and to perform his duty, and not to be allowing other people to go into those offices or do anything that they shouldn't have done. We didn't worry about anybody going in the offices and doing things, and here we are. To my mind, this is silly beyond silly.
Amen. That's why I asked, what y'all opinion, man, I gave you my opinion, I agree with her, I mean, she'll agree, I understand, yeah. I was gonna kind of say that too, a little wally got me, but I didn't want to, you know, hurt anybody's feelings or anything, but, you know, I, it's mad, man. Been here eleven years, and it's the worst it's ever been, nobody trusts nobody. You could give me the keys, man, I would never touch somebody's office, man, I would never even dream of doing it.
James, it may sound like, it may sound like we're not trusting people, but people aren't trusting us to take care of our office.
That's what I meant, it goes...
And if there is an emergency, the sheriff having to go into a safe and get a key out, there's no emergency that can wait that long.
I understand, that's why I said emergency, you kick the door down, or you break a window or something like that, I understand that, but, you know, and I'm glad...
And Pete, you agreed with us last week, you told us last week you agreed with us, when we were standing in my office. You said, I agree with you, but what can I do? Well, you can do something today.
I agree. I stick to my... Y'all respond to what you have in your office, what are we gonna do with all these other keys? We gonna throw them all away, we gonna destroy them all, we gonna lock them all, gonna save the deposit box down there?
My preference would be that...
We're not gonna leave any keys in this key box designed for the building, this is designed by a very expensive architect, this is the way to design buildings all over the world today.
Right, I, I...
They clean banks.
I hear you.
In New York City and Los Angeles, everywhere.
I, I hear you, and that's a mistake that was made long before we came into office. My preference personally would be that I'm allowed to call a locksmith out and have a key made that fits my office, the front door and the break room, and the server room, and those are the only rooms I need to be in, and that's the key that I want. The sheriff should have a key to get into the building from the front and the back door, and his office, and the break room, and whatever other rooms he needs to be in for his business, that's my preference. If we could each have a locksmith that we talk to as department heads, and we decide how we, what we need key, and then I have a key... And then I have a key to my outside door, I have a key to my inside door, and I have a key to the common areas of the building that I have, need to be in.
Can I ask the sheriff something? The video cameras, are they gonna run twenty-four seven, three sixty-five?
Yes, sir.
Will you have live video feed from the sheriff's department? I mean, you can look at the monitor, you know what's going on, on over there?
They're gonna be in sheriff's department. And in my building, in my office, we'll have live feed and that, that's kinda where we're at right now.
So you have live video feed in the New Annex and in the old sheriff's?
That's what we're talking about, Jeffrey, getting here and getting this done as quick as possible. That's kinda where Commissioner Yar said, "Hey, Dean, you know, the sheriff moving over, 'cause I have to coordinate all this stuff in a very short time, 'cause I actually have a camera that runs in my office for the jail. I have to have that down at a minimum to be moved to this other office. I can't let it go down for a week or two, 'cause that's a liability that I have to think about. Stuff goes on in the jail with inmates and other stuff. So that's why I said, I can't move until I get everything shifted over that way, dig the ditches, get the, everything done, because this is a liability to the county, and you don't tell them what can happen. Especially in a jail. And that's why I said, I gotta move it, and we gotta do it in a very short time, like in one day.
We'll just move it to the other facilities. Don't have nobody in the jail.
What do you think, Judge?
I haven't, I think the sheriff keeps the sheriff like this. So we're not past that. If we're not gonna do that, we need to put something in the minutes that's asked for commissioners' court, the sheriff is not responsible for emergency situations in that annex, and he's not responsible, he's only responsible for responding. Because if he's not responsible for opening doors and stuff, I don't want him coming back.
He is responsible for emergency situations all over the county, and you can't put that in your minutes, and you can't take away his oath responsibility.
That's exactly right, Judge, that's why you should have a key. He's the sheriff, he's the keeper of the buildings, I don't think he's gonna do anything wrong.
He can keep, he can keep other people happy.
I mean, in most counties, the sheriff does have a key. And in some of the other counties you work in, Judge, the sheriff has a key.
He will have a key, 'cause his office is in there anyway.
I mean, he has, but in the other counties, the sheriff has a key.
So he'll have a key to Vai's office then, and then to Luana's, to all the offices, of all the annexes, right? If you're passing this, he's gonna have a key to everyone's office.
And that one's not on here today, but if y'all wanna put it back on here, we'll...
You know, that's my thing, we got one item on here in one building.
Because you know what?
We're not really accomplishing...
The other engine was already done.
We can't settle one building, how can we settle all of them in one building?
Well, I don't know, but we oughta try, don't you think?
It ain't true. I mean, but in most instances...
I mean, you're in charge of the building, what do you think? Just do them one by one, agenda by agenda? Have like one thirty minute, or a Friday afternoon?
I think we're gonna get this and finish first, before y'all got the other one.
Well, they shouldn't all be on there together.
Can I, can I say something, Ross? There's five of us right here, right? Five decisions, right? You know where I stand, exactly where I stand. We should come out, everybody should tell us where we stand, then we know, then we take a vote on it, and either it's gonna pass or not, 'cause we can sit here, none of us are gonna change each other's mind, or not. You're not gonna change my mind. You're not. I'm sure you're not gonna change. That's why, he wants to destroy the keys, I don't. You want the sheriff to have a key. He said it the other day, he didn't want one, that's why my solution is what it is today.
He said he stated he didn't want one due to the trust issues that were being brought up about him. But then, well, I said he would take one, so, I mean...
Well, he still take one. He's in charge of the building, for heaven's sakes. Sheriff, what would you want? Tell us what you're gonna do with the building, it's your building. I just do like, did courthouse and the jail and everything else, I take care of it, and kinda monitor what goes on on a daily basis.
And you don't have keys to anybody's offices except your own, now?
That's true.
Everybody has key to their office.
And it works okay for you?
A master key. That's the way it is everywhere. Even the bank. I was on the board of directors, the bank, you know, for thirty years. And then comes in wherever he wanted to. Turned off the alarm, and did his work.
But they don't leave their money laying out, they have it in a vault, correct?
Well, it's in a vault, yes. But what do you do, what do you do at the courthouse now?
But it's not so much the money, I think it's the documents, too, the files that are in there.
Do the same thing you did for the last forty years, for heaven's sakes.
But that's not possible. Times are different now.
There's been only one break-in in the courthouse, as far as I can remember. The only thing they took was some computers, I believe.
But in most counties, when I got back from the service, the sheriff had a master key.
Of course, he needs it.
And mine was different, so, two hundred fifty more counties, two hundred fifty more ways.
We're not getting anywhere today.
First, I believe you should have access to the buildings, but not to individual offices.
What do you think, Tracy?
I think that they all leave like it is. He has, he has a key to the front door and the back door. He needs to get in one of their offices, he can get one of those people open the door. Demand them open the door.
What do you think?
I agree with Tracy.
He can't demand.
He can't pay this guy.
Yeah, he can. And if he don't, you're in jail.
You know what, we talked, we talked our piece, we're gonna sit here until it gets real hot, and you get in...
Okay, you know how me and I feel.
I'm gonna, this is gonna be my motion. Back me up on it, don't, whatever, it's a y'all decision, there's five of us. My motion is to get the, not to destroy the keys, no, not to destroy the keys, to get safety deposit boxes in the courthouse, and take exactly the copy of the minutes, get them a copy of the minutes. I'll have everything written down, the tax ID for the account, give everyone the social security number, driver license, that could have access to that key for any reason, you know. You know, I read that out, I don't wanna read it again, but I'll get it printed out or whatever. And the only reason I'm going with this, 'cause the sheriff said he didn't want a key the last time, I'm gonna stick to that right there, 'cause this is what I came in with, and this is what I'm gonna follow with. The sheriff doesn't get a key, they go back to the, later on, we can always change it, you know, we can always, we can always come back and do it again, and...
No.
Excuse me? No, I know, but for now, we're gonna go to a safety deposit box in the bank, it has to be one of the commissioners' court people being us here, and we're not always gonna be here, so the next one, and one of the department heads, not just one of the employees, and not just someone that they left in charge or anything like that. It either has to be the department head, not, the department head can't call us in, remind us, "Hey, Joe blow this," no, it's not gonna work like that. It has to be the department head, and one of the commissioners' court, to have access to that master key. The only reason I don't wanna throw away the master keys, I'm making my motion about it, is because if we do have an accident, there are fires, something like that, and the locks usually don't burn if it's minor, and we gotta get out of there, and we gotta have someone, we're gonna have to pay seven hundred fifty dollars, I think that's what it cost, to get another key made for a locksmith to come over here for the company to make one, where we can have this and that at eight, ten dollars, we can keep it open for seventy-five years, for, say, you know what I mean, for seven hundred and fifty dollars. So basically, my motion is what I stated, just to get a safety deposit box, put those keys in there, that everybody has their own key to the office, sheriff doesn't get a key, just to the middle, just the way he has to the annex building, just the way he has to the courthouse. They've never had a key, I don't know if Bobby Boots has his office, but I think that's the way it's always been. You have a key to the main office, and I think you were comfortable with that, you're fine with that. He never needed it before, and if I'm making a mistake with this motion, I apologize to all the employees, to the county, but this is the way that I strongly feel, and this is what I came out with, and that's my motion. Does that make sense, Mr. Bussman? So, so in other words, so in other, so in other words, everybody has...
That doesn't make any sense to me, James.
In other words, everybody has their own key, and there's not a problem, so if there's something missing, or gone, or money taken, or anything from their own office, they can't come back and say, "Well, the only one that had access was the sheriff." And then, well, he said in the meeting that he was gonna tell his chief deputy he'd give him access, that's gonna pop up like that. Oh, but it's in the sheriff's department, somebody might get in there, the cleaning person, it's gonna be too many issues, and we're gonna, there're gonna be attorneys everywhere, and I trust the sheriff with my life, I'll say that ten times, I do. But it's not, it's right, I do, but it's not that. It's the problem, they're gonna uprise, and if we give everyone that, that, of course, they're gonna come back, and they're gonna want everyone else. Why doesn't he have a key to his office, to Luana's office, to Vai's office, to everyone's office? And where are we gonna stand after that? What, what are we gonna do? He just, he just said that we have, we have the right to give them the key, regardless of they're elected officials or not. So, what are likely, we're gonna do it for equality, and I'm always at equality. And right now, I always vote to where the majority of the people want it done. You know, that's what, that's what I'm here for. And there's the majority of the people want it done like this, and I'm gonna back them up. I don't always back up, you know, everyone, but, I mean, on this one, I think, I think strongly on this one. That's my motion I'm throwing up today.
I'll second this, but...
All in favor?
No, well, he was shaking his fingers, so I thought he was gonna say something. No, he just...
Screwed up our recording, that's all he's doing.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Does this refer to master keys only, or two keys, three keys?
Where'd you go?
Well, those are the...
All the other spare keys, are we gonna keep the key box in that office? And that building or not? This is always key, you have your key.
Everybody, everybody, all their own heads are gonna get all their keys.
Yes, and we are going to call...
Whoever's gonna have theirs are gonna get their own keys, and then, if they wanna put the extra keys in the security box, go ahead, but with one of us. Nobody has access to that box unless it's somebody's from commissioners' court. It's not just 'cause it's me here, it's the next dude that comes in, or a girl, or whatever.
So, so, let me see if I understand this now. So everybody, we got all these locks on all these doors.
Eleven.
Eleven doors. So everybody, all department heads, as I hear right now from Miss Carol over here, that everybody is gonna get a locksmith to get their own keys being made.
That's my preference for my office, I can't speak for the other ones, that's what I would like to do.
But, I mean, I know when I took over in two thousand and five, I did the same thing. This is kinda what I'm thinking, we got all these keys, we're all worried about, but as we are talking right now, from one head of her department, she wants to go get another locksmith to come in and redo her lock for her office. This is true.
Only to, because otherwise, we'll have a key to my office, a key to the break room, we'll have three or four keys. So I want to simplify it with one key that fits my office and the common areas that I need into.
Can I have that, too?
There's already keys for all the offices, you agree?
Right, what I'm saying is, like, the break room has a separate key, and my office has a key, and then the server room, where I need to do my backup stations, has a separate key, so I would already have four keys, so somebody's calling a locksmith and having them come out and say, and it would still fit on the master. Please rekey the, please rekey me a key that fits my door, the front door, the break room, and the server room, I have one key instead of four.
You can't do that. Someone has that key in that server room, they get in there beside you when they come to work on it, you can't have it.
No, no, no.
That's a true, valid question.
What do you mean? Now, I wouldn't have the only one. I, my, my one key would fit that door.
Then they'd get in your office, too.
No, thank you, I was being, I can't, I've done it before. Done it before.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, man, but on that, on that note right there, I disagree with that. I think the keys that you have, everybody should stay with the keys, there's three or four keys. I think so, because I mean, and no offense, I'm not trying to make fun of you or nothing, but I have about forty keys here, and I keep up with them. Janitors probably got like three hundred, and they keep up with them. I think three or four keys, and no offense to anyone, then y'all can keep up with that. If y'all can, then there's a problem. 'Cause I don't think the county should pay no offense to anyone. I don't think the county should pay a locksmith to come over and get a key when we're all grown up, and we can take care of our own keys. I think that we're, I'm voting to the way people wanted it done already, I think that's a good one.
Let's just hypothetically say there was another election, and we had another county clerk. The new county clerk, can she rekey those locks?
It's up to us, you just said it's up to us, and if she can, if she can...
Well, Judge, she rekeyed her office.
Man the courthouse.
Man the courthouse.
Another same problem that's here, they're gonna be he, Ross, and this thing, everything else, that you hear.
Why wouldn't you have to?
Well, that's when you make your employees responsible. That's when you make your employees responsible, they lose their key, they take it as a replacement or the rekeying.
They have to rekey, because whoever picks up that key...
Well, that's what I said, whoever loses it, they're responsible.
But these keys right here, that y'all are gonna get, the other keys, they're not, they're not, you can't duplicate them, right, even the other ones?
I've not seen a key yet.
All the keys to y'all's offices cannot get duplicated, right? Pete, you seen them?
Not legally, they can't get duplicated, and I'm sure there's some inmates at the county here.
I see what, I see what you mean. Yeah, I mean, I show some times, yeah.
I bet the keys to the offices can be duplicated, just not the master keys.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, I was pretty sure they could, 'cause the master key's the ones that can't get duplicated, but...
How many keys are there for each individual to use?
Probably three hundred key in that box.
So each door's gonna have four keys. Usually, when you got a lock coming in, has four keys to unlock. So while we're seeing them, I install a commercial residential...
Each employee of that department would need to have a key to that office.
And to get into the building.
And to the building, yes.
And market.
And the break room.
The breaker has a lock on the inside?
I would say just leave the...
Just the outside.
Just leave it open from the inside all the time, and you don't need a key to the break room.
That's why I said there was even a door that locked, it was just the outside door.
Right, just leave the outside one open.
The door that's on the inside of the building going in the break room, we were keeping that locked, so that when there were court days, people just didn't wander in there, or...
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Most people would, most people would listen to that.
In your office?
Yeah.
Yeah, like the break room, I need the key in the office.
And y'all gonna put a piece of PVC about that big on like, really, the best place you can...
Yes. But they need to sign these keys, they need to have a sponsor, it's like... I know, we keep saying, if Adam's out, we just want just this ten dollars, like, if it's locked on this, we want seven hundred fifty more replacements. So they're all the same, but...
Right, no, everybody, that's right, everybody should sign for the keys, you're exactly right, Judge. That way, if they use it, they pay for it, but if they use it, then, and then if they lose it, what department head, are they gonna come back to the county and three locks, it's gonna be, what, twenty-two fifty or whatever? Whose responsibility it is, is that the department head?
If it's their keys, then it's their responsibility.
Or it's the employee's responsibility to lost the key. That's up to the department head to control their office.
So basically, then...
So we'll have to pay to have the lock changed, plus pay the administrative fee for the people to come out here, so seven hundred fifty dollars each, and they just tell us for a lock. But that doesn't include the charge to come out here, and that doesn't include trip charge, it only includes lock charge.
That's what I'm saying, it should, if, if, if they're lost the key, then it should be the responsibility of the county to sign it, okay?
They're all supposed to be responsible adults here. We're making, as Judge Saxon said, a mountain out of a molehill. This is almost an hour with this discussion.
I, I came in with this, I said it should take five minutes. We're here now, it's real simple, man.
But it says on here, you have to use it by resolution, James, you're saying that your resolution, you have, whereas, you have to...
I understand that, but...
You have to get this signed, so...
But if we're gonna, I understand, but mainly what we're dealing with, we came down here, is if the sheriff's gonna get a key or not, or if they're gonna have access to their offices just alone, right? Now, we could, I guess we could consider to, separate on tonight, for example, where every key's gonna go, who's gonna sign for it, get all their employees' name, I mean, I mean, where do we stand? We can make the motion with, with a little extension of it.
The department head takes, maybe you sign for it, they're responsible for those locks when they walk out of here. Absolutely.
Bottom line, and if they use it, the county doesn't pay.
The county will not pay, the taxpayer should pay for anybody's loss.
Do they get all the keys that we have, all the keys are supposed to go in that spare key box?
We need to figure out how they're gonna be done, Pete.[1670.92]
I mean, I mean, if they're gonna be...
I'll go spare key for it, and throw the same deposit box.
I have no idea, James made a motion, Tracy seconded it, where were we?
That was that, the two master keys.
All the way up to the bank.
That was just the two master keys.
That's the two master keys.
Well, anyway, just stop there, 'cause we haven't decided anything to do that.
Well, they need to, where do you, they, they have a lock box in the building for the extra other keys?
There's a key in the extension department's room. When it was over, and I said, "Would you mind having a spare key box in your room?" She said, "No, I don't mind at all." So y'all were here eight hours a day, from eight to five, and I was sitting here, and we're just putting this office up, the spare key box, we don't wanna put it in the break room, we don't wanna put it in the mailroom, in somebody's office, right? Alright, so, uh, we're gonna have spare keys? Are we gonna, we're gonna give all these keys to the employee, when they sign for all of the keys, we're gonna keep some in the spare key box?
I think you should better give all the keys to the department head, because it's not, it's just like having a...
Master key.
Key floating around out there.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You gotta give them all the keys. And they gotta sign for them, and they're responsible for them key, and they come with this, and somebody gets one of it, and they're, they're...
Alright, so, so we got keys in the, in the electrical room, we got, we got spare keys in the room, we're gonna put the left spare key back holding in the lock box, and then when they get it, that's...
Anything that's public, grab it.
We put a key to the water closet, that's not...
Anything that's public?
Anything that, no, that's what these people want.
We put a spare key to the break room.
Public bathroom, break room, and the bathroom.
I, I got that, I got that bad.
And as of right now, the fire extinguishers have keys that open them. And if they are not able to, they are no use. So, uh...
So this is done in jail, this is...
That isn't a situation in there. With these keys.
They're in here, been in jail before.
Park head, it should be...
What good are they if they're locked up, the way it's...
So, I don't, we're generally agreeing with you, 'cause that's what I'm... Put the two master keys into safety deposit box in the bank. General agreement on that?
What about the, Ross was just gonna ask me something.
No, I'm making sure I understand.
That, basically, that's...
That's more the motion, is the past your key to the safe deposit box.
Yeah, and all the other keys that go to each individual office, give it to the head with them. You said for them to sign for it, and if any one of those keys get lost, or one of them employees lose it or something. Since everybody...
The department head is responsible.
That's, this is the way they want it, so they'll be responsible for any kind of, would that be right? Is that okay, if you put it like that, if they need a key or something, it has to be rekeyed? Does county have to pay for it, or would it be their expenses? I mean, we're all responsible adults here, and we're making a responsible decision here.
Making a decision to the hall, James.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars.
You mean if one is lost or something, or, or what?
Okay, if one key, if one key gets lost, there's one key lost, and then there's something missing, six months from now. I would say if one key gets lost, you're gonna have to rekey everything, and it's your responsibility to afford.
Then we serve that up, though?
Right, I mean, I think, because if one key gets lost, and then something's missing, that's like a master key out there floating around. So one of the employees loses a key, oh, oh, just make another key for ten bucks, it's not gonna work. You gotta rekey everything, 'cause somebody has that key, or could have that key.
Or a mad wife, a mad husband could take it, or go do something over here.
You know what I mean? Mad kid.
But none of these keys are labeled, they're inside Carnes County auditor's office, or clerk's office.
Oh, they're not. Keep holding all that stuff in the master box, and lock it off in the... We could share ourselves, you know?
You gotta make a big lock.
He's gotta save our ourselves. Then you might, I'll be able to ten bucks.
I'm looking at a big lock box.
As for the smallest one. And my suggestion, I mean, it's not perfect, you know, it's not, I, I don't know, it's just what I thought, the suggestion that I thought would work. And it would keep the peace, and it would keep on going the way it's been going for years and years and years and years.
The only difference is, though, James, the only difference, I can even argue, is that in the older courthouse, and that, and I know for a fact, people have been in mine in Mr. Bussman's office since we left there. How they've been there, I don't know.
How do you know that they were in there?
We saw the pictures, that they've been in there.
Saw the pictures?
We, they've been in there, somebody's been in our office, and, uh...
Was it me?
We, they, somebody's been in there, wasn't you? But somebody's been in there, so I don't know how...
It's probably the custodian, why, why would we think somebody was in there? I mean, the custodian has a key, that's probably who it is.
I didn't think the custodians had keys. I know they do, I know they did to our office, but everybody said they didn't have them.
Well, then that's probably who's in there.
But everybody said they didn't have them.
The custodians should have a key to everybody, but when you get a, when you get a contractor, one of these people that y'all tried to hire to clean that court out, they're gonna be so mad. I mean, wouldn't you? You're paying people that are from work, if they're gonna be working, those doors not there, or not long, or... People not there, a lot longer. We've never had any people, Beth's here, except for one office. What office was that, Bob?
Oh, permission. County attorney's office.
Um, the sheriff's department.
I can leave that locked. This is ridiculous, this is been three hours, you know, all this efficient, five hours, bill.
Hey, our bill's gone down, leave us alone.
There you go, the ghost of the courthouse.
Did everybody keep their office?
The ghost we see, Maria, the ghost we see.
The ghost of the courthouse.
You have the one that makes the electrical?
We're gonna get into, living out here, just go wrap this up, there's nice sized chunking rocks, it's like the wooden side real easy.
But Pete, how, how big is, I mean, that thing that Willie, does this, is Willie just gonna be responsible for five extinguishers and the...
Is that your typical thing?
Five extinguishers, the, uh...
One of, one of them gets broken, they come in.
Any department who wants spare keys, they'll have a key.
A company, they gotta go that way.
But they need to give Willie that permission or something, because I don't want them to say that Willie lost a key.
We'll get in there, as her supervisor, I will make sure that we get something in there.
That needs to be, yes.
Does that mean Willie's gonna be in charge of the lock box with the key to it, or what?
She will have the key to the lock box, it will say in her possession, yes.
But that's the fire extinguishers and the...
Correct, whatever, if Willie's not here.
Another Mount that in Paul Hill, I guess we break that lock.
I mean, I guess JD or I, one, it, it, there's, there's three people in that office?
And...
We want y'all bonded.
JD or I, you want us all bonded? I tried to get us bonded at the beginning of the year, and it was denied.
I know one thing, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna talk to Charlie Mox, and get one of the firemen's tools, 'cause I used to do it, I was at DPS, and with the task force, I can take out a door, I can take out a window. Instead of having a lock, master key, I will have that fireman's tool, it stands about tall, I can get anything in the courtroom, courthouse, or in the jail. I'm gonna requisition one in from Charlie Mox, if y'all see that on the bill, just come in my office.
That's real simple, right?
No, real simple.
At least we'll know you've been there, Sheriff.
Been there.
You still have access to the leader.
You got it.
That's why, 'cause it's true, he does, I mean, he's...
Alright, sure.
So, that'll solve the lock box, probably. I mean, if Willie's not here...
It needs to be somewhere within y'all's department, not with an individual.
One of the three in that office will...
Y'all need to know where it is, but not just one, because if she's...
I mean, we have contact, we're at all times.
Oh, I understand that, but emergencies happen. So, motion, or the second, let's vote.
Okay, wait a second, you already get a motion in a second, so do we, we're gonna rescind that? And you're gonna, you're gonna clarify?
We're fine, it's exactly what Ross just wrote. Basically, my motion, master, uh, key to be kept in the safety deposit box at the bank, all other office key...
Office and exterior keys, they relate to department heads upon their signature. Under with the understanding that employees are responsible for loss of a key, you can have to lose the key. And then third would be to keep the keys to the common area or public areas from windows, not in a lock box, or a key box.